Uh, Andy, excuse me, Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Andy Key.
Here.
Trey Robey. Luke Gier.
Present.
Tyson Hacking.
Here.
Matt Belgrin.
Here.
Alisa Granger.
Here.
Tyson, would you lead us in the invocation, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Our dear Canadian father, we're grateful for this day. We're grateful for the opportunities to serve this wonderful town of Rangelley. We ask you to bless us that we can have a guidance in what we do and we might do it as right and what is helpful to the town. We love thee and are grateful for all the freedoms which we enjoy. We ask you to bless the soldiers who sacrifice for us that we might enjoy these freedoms. Bless them that they can be safe and protected. We love thee and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Lisa, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five, discussion and action to approve the minutes of a May fourteen, two thousand nineteen meeting. Any discussion on those?
I'm making a motion that we approve the minutes for the May fourteenth, twenty nineteen meeting.
Second that.
Motion is made by Luke, second by Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions and public input? Are good. Changes to the agenda. Lisa?
So, I'd like to suspend the supervisor reports. They got away from me today, so why do I care? All my fault. And then, um, kinda wanna talk about, uh, item fourteen A. I wanted to, we're gonna delete like three of those committees and just combine one. I think certain ones haven't, I've never had a committee meeting under those topics since I've worked here, so maybe they don't be, they're not needed. So, let's go ahead and keep utilities, public safety, and then we'll keep finance and human resources. And obviously, the Rangelley School of Ammonition is not a committee. That's a, a different board for which we can help contribute to, so. We'll take out finance, development, and public works.
Okay. Any other changes?
I don't think so.
We don't have any public hearings, committee and board meetings? Any, we don't, I didn't think we have any. Do we?
No, we had the AGNC meeting, probably since our last, um, meeting. We had a lot of good information there. That's what one of our, um, resolutions is about. We'll talk about it when we get to that. I missed some of it just because I had to do a conference call, but I don't know if there's any highlights you would like to touch on, Andy, or?
So, we had the executive director of Dole came and kinda presented their, their, uh, plan, I guess you could say, on what they're gonna try to be moving forward under the governor's direction. And, um, one of the things that I had a lot of concerns with and brought it to him was they're gonna take twelve million dollars out of severance tax, basically. And they're gonna contribute that to renewable projects throughout the state. And it just doesn't make any sense to do that, but.
What they figure is, uh, right for them?
What's that?
What they're figuring is right for them, not what's right for the?
Correct. And, and my issue is the fact that they're actually cutting, like, if you're using renewable energy, you're, you're no longer gonna be using your fossil fuels to create your severance tax that are funding the project. So, it's basically removing its own revenue stream. Uh, yeah, it's, I wasn't very impressed with his response, I'll put it that way. And then, BLM.
BLM.
Yeah, the BLM director for the state of Colorado was there. And she was a little concerned with the issues that we brought up about, uh, how long it took us to get our OHV trail system here when she found out that most of it's county roads. I don't know if anything's gonna come of that, but, uh, we, myself and, um, some others from Rangelley were there and expressed their concerns with how that's all moved forward. And then, there was some serious discussion about the lake, and I think you might have seen that in the paper, the discussion they had with the BLM at that point, so. Sounds like that side got resolved. And then, yeah, the resolution we'll get to later. I think that was pretty much it, the gist of that one, so. It's a good meeting.
Jocelyn actually is working on a event, a gravel grinder, at the end of September. And BLM was kinda doing the same, uh, type of situation, but they all of a sudden just switched gears and they're pushing it through, and she's working with Rublanko, Mesa, and Garfield 'cause she's doing a ride over Baxter Pass, and they're all jumping right in and helping her out. So, maybe the director did hear the concerns at that meeting.
That would be fantastic. I, I pulled her aside afterwards and had worked with her, so.
But she was very open to the conversation. She wasn't, she said, "That's not the way it's supposed to work. It's, we're supposed to be here to help facilitate, not restrict unless we need to," so.
Yeah, and, and she, I think she's, uh, I did a little, um, research, and she's from, I think, the Montrose area. So, she's from Western Slope a little bit and has some ties to that. So, I think that helps when, when you're talking to them about public land and they actually understand the impacts of it around us and how it works, so. It, it, I hope it was well received and it was well intended, but sometimes it's not great. Sometimes it gets let loose, but, yeah.
Um, on to item ten, any reports from council? Um, one thing that, that I have is we had the second meeting with all the special districts, um, two weeks ago. And that meeting actually went pretty good. We, we had most of the districts represented there. Most of those people are, are wanting a economic slash marketing person. Um, and we told them that that's what we're doing, and their concern was that, you know, that we make that person for the town. And everybody in general, all the special districts, not just the town of Rangelley. And I think that went over well. We also talked about combining some of the services that, um, that the other districts have to maybe, um, streamline everything. And one of the examples was like a HVAC person that could take care of, um, all of the stuff that every little, you know, all the different places. And one of the things was, was not replacing, you know, like, like somebody from Ducey's Electric, not taking away from their business, but yet trying to get something in town that all the districts are needing that we're having to farm in from different communities. So, that was good. And then it was, there was some discussion about, you know, each district and their mill levies coming up and when they think that they're gonna need them in the near future, so. Uh, we have another meeting July first, first Monday in July. Yeah, it'll be July first. So, I mean, I think that that's good, having those, getting those folks together. It's not a, it's not a big deal like the, um, it's a networking one that they have up.
The community network.
Community networking where they have a bunch of people. We're basically just talking to the department heads and their board heads, so. I, I think it's done.
I think it's very manageable, and we seem to have really good conversations. We're not getting muddled down into individual concerns. We're working really good as a group.
So, moving forward, I think that that's gonna, uh, hopefully, I guess, saying that that will streamline things and kind of everybody can understand where everybody, all the extras or all the special districts are in the town. And hopefully, we can work together to save money and move forward. Anybody else? Did you have anything to add on that, Lisa?
You know, um, I thought everything that you brought up was really good. We talked about a casino, which I did a little work on because I couldn't really remember why we always had to go through one of the tribes. And they basically said the state has to vote on that. If we wanted to have a casino here, they would have to vote and say, "Yes, Rangelley could have a casino." So, that's probably why we were always trying to go through the tribe to them. But, I mean, I think those ideas, we gotta go back and explore them. I mean, there's never say, never about anything. We've gotta look at all avenues right now and not rule anything out. So, I just think all of those ideas are worth exploring again and talking about.
Um, item eleven, item eleven, we'll skip Jeff and Kelly. Item twelve, report for, from town manager. Lisa?
So, talking about that meeting, unfortunately, only three entities in Colorado got the ready grant, and I was a failure. Makes me sad. But, the heads of the Colorado USDA have called me and offered their help and assistance, and they actually wanna attend that community meeting and talk about ways that they could help us, including grants and assistance in any way. So, they're both trying to see if they could clear their calendar and come to our meeting on July first, which I think is great. I said that might be better. I mean, get personal assistance, so.
Yeah.
I was happy about that. Yesterday, uh, CDOT had their first, um, section meeting in Meekirk, and Jocelyn and I attended that. And they talked about, um, doing some major work to Douglas. Obviously, they had, um, roadwork already planned and engineered for the, um, to widen one thirty-nine on this side. And we're, uh, I wrote a letter of support, and I can't remember what it stands for. It's a FLAP grant. This, CDOT is actually going for that to try and help fix Douglas Pass. So, I was really encouraged that they are, you know, taking that initiative 'cause depending on the counties, I don't think we would ever have that. So, that's really good news in my estimation. And so, I gave you a handout about, um, the new CDOT director. She wants to do a grassroots effort to try and get input. I really don't know how heavily it will weigh, you know, on what we do, but I do think it's really important that everybody try and go on that site and put in their comments and, and let them know, you know, the more they have, maybe the better chance we have of adding some kind of input to that program. So, you might just read through that. But, it was a, it was a good meeting, and they had some, you know, good information that they talked about, and they're coming out and asking questions, so.
Can we get this posted on Facebook for me comment?
Yeah, I'll have it. I'll do that tomorrow. I had to dig a little bit 'cause they did have their booklet, and I had to drill down in the CDOT website, which was not easy to find, so I finally found it late this evening. Um, obviously, too, you see that I gave you an invitation. Ty is having, um, Jay Davis from the Community Oil and Response Program from Seemok come in and teach a class about Marlin. And he's opened it up to our whole staff and also the, you know, anybody in the community. I think, um, someone said maybe some in the fire department might be interested. I don't know. How you feel?
I, I haven't heard anything about it. This is the first I've heard about it.
I don't know who brought that up with Ty, but he was gonna try and reach out to you. But, um, I think she would be willing to come back if, if that time doesn't work. But, if any of you would like to attend, just hear about it. You're welcome to come, I think. Ty's been very proactive about trying to get things, you know, here in Rangelley rather than us having to travel, so I think that's great. The Rangelley roundup, that's, um, sponsored by the Oil and Gas, um, Chapter Port Airport Search Colorado Oil and Gas. It's gonna be, um, our project's gonna be on the east end of town. We're gonna try and redo all of the rockwork that's falling down. And so, it's on June twenty-first on a Friday, so I'm pretty sure that Andy's got some people coming. And if anybody else would like to participate, just come and show up. I thought the Chevron tree shrub planting, whatever it was, was a great success. That one, yeah, wants to talk about that.
Yeah, actually, uh, uh, the ladies that put it on, uh, PGPA, uh, representative and Catherine Popgeorge, that was the project manager, were very happy with the community participation. We had probably over a hundred and thirty people signed up.
I mean, others would be a little sore. I know we did very often. I thought, I thought we did a really, it was a fun time, and they fed us and Matt cooked and.
I, I just hope that it becomes an area that the public has access to for recreation at some point, you know?
Yeah, 'cause how many, was it five hundred?
Five hundred bushes, yeah. Buffalo bears make good jelly, too, by the way.
I had never heard of buffalo berries, so I'm curious to see what that's like. Well, Janet, you know, went and she, of course, was very particular about how things were being done 'cause she's very much a horticulturist, but I thought it was fun. I mean, like I said, even though I was a little sore, it was really a nice time.
And, and something that, uh, we, we can talk off, the watering of that, I'd like to maybe discuss it. Maybe how the town could maybe, uh, be employed to maintain those, because I don't think they really have anybody. They were supposedly, had somebody lined up to do that. And, uh, I'm not sure that that's actually in place, so it might be something that.
Let me talk to Janet and Jeff about that tomorrow.
And, and maybe, or I can get you in touch with Catherine, 'cause I think she was the one that was supposed to make that happen. And I, I think it's still a gap.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that would be great, Matt. Um, when Andy was talking about the, our community meeting, I've already had contact with Matt and Pam Redd about maybe trying to share some services, so we'll see how that goes. And then, I'll keep the council informed of whatever might be decided. But, we'll start, make some small changes and see if we could, you know.
Cut down on double taxation?
Well, yeah. We'll try and make sure, I mean, I, I feel like most of the town staff jumps in and helps out wherever they can anyway. It doesn't matter what entity it is. Jeff especially. I mean, he's always jumping on the spot, and I think all of the town workers do that when they're called upon. But, it doesn't hurt to, you know, make, you know, real good plans and try and assist each other wherever we can. It is all taxpayer money, so I don't think it should matter who does it or how or why it's done if we can all keep busy. Kaylee's called, invited us to this aviation roadshow, and, um, obviously, we don't have to do the drive from Meekirk to Rangelley, but they're gonna do a tour out at the airport, and, um, they're gonna actually take people on flights, if you want to do that. And they'll have a drone exhibition and a student panel to kinda talk about the aviation program at CTC and how they maybe plan to expand that a little bit. And I, I, the, I didn't completely understand this, but I believe the manufacturer's edge is to kind of try and see what programs are out there, and it might even help entice some businesses here, you don't know, or utilize our program in some way. But, they're gonna do a whole day of that, and then they also, and I'll probably approach you the next meeting about maybe helping sponsor the lunch for the splash in event. 'Cause they said they spend probably about maybe two thousand dollars on lunch. I'm not sure how many people that is for, but. They were just asking for some sponsorship. I said we would, you know, look at something, so.
So, on the, uh, Colorado, the manufacturer's edge Colorado Space Business Roundtable, one of the things I think they're gonna try to do when they come out here, too, is, is individually meet if we have any business owners that wanna get into manufacturing or have specialized products or specialized abilities. So, if you guys know of anybody, try to get that to Lisa.
And I'll, like, you know, 'cause she said she, they were open inviting other people. But she just did, like, Stuart Welding and, um, people that, you know, kinda do manufacturing type.
Right.
There might be, or, I think she, you just told her Steve Low.
Yeah.
I, I don't know of anybody else. If you guys have any suggestions, let me, and I'll make sure Kaylee's aware of that.
Just 'cause there are so many people who just do stuff in their homes and don't ever tell anybody. It's like, this is an opportunity. What they're trying to do is get stuff built here, like, these guys wanna have, they're, they're out of Boulder, I think, right? They wanna be getting, or, I think it's either that or Junction, but they wanna get all their stuff manufactured as close as possible because it's cheaper, easier, quicker, all that. And they're trying to find out what's actually out there in the state and readily available instead of getting it from California and Oregon, whatever else, so. That's the intent behind it. Pretty cool, dude.
Yeah, for sure.
And so, we've got all our suburb fires on board now, and Jeff's been doing some of his roadwork and cut the flowers out. Next thing will be mosquitoes. And I think tomorrow, he's going to spray in the evening in Rangelley and then probably do the golf course in the morning, on Thursday morning, so. Normally, I don't get to know that ahead of time, so now we all know. I don't, does anyone have any questions or anything else that you want to discuss?
All the mosquitoes thing, like, what do we look at, what, what are we looking at timeline-wise to, like, spray again to make sure we're in good shape?
Depends on the, how quickly they come back. I mean, we're mostly trying to do it early because they are pretty plentiful already, and I'm afraid if we wait until July fourth, which is kinda usually the time to spray, they'll just be out of control 'cause we've had lots of complaints already. So, just depends on how, um, quickly they come back. He's gonna actually take John and Jeff, maybe pull up in the airplane and show them some problem spots because you could put some kind of brick in the fog areas. And he just thought if we flew over that, we would have a better understanding of where we can do our fogging in our truck and where we can put the bricks and maybe, you know, try and do a better job of remediation of them.
That sounds great.
From having to spray too many times this summer.
Is it pretty quick and easy to get that process in place? Like, if you call them up and say, "Hey, we need to spray," is it a couple days in a week?
Oh, he's got at least a couple weeks.
Couple weeks, okay.
I mean, Lanny's pretty good, but he's got, um, work that he does, so he can't just say, "Need you this week." And plus, we also have to do our, um, due diligence and notify everybody in the public and also make phone calls 'cause there's certain people that have to be called. So, it's gonna be at least a couple weeks ahead of time. And he kinda knows, too, when we generally do it, so I think he's aware of that.
Does the county have a mosquito abatement program?
I don't believe so. I mean.
I don't think the county does, but there's a, there's an abatement program to the east of town. What is that called?
It's the pest district, but they're not gonna participate this time 'cause they don't feel like they have the funds. But I did contact Eldon to see if he wanted him to, like, do the lane area. I don't know what they decided 'cause he didn't tell me that, but he's also gonna make sure he hits the Lexitown course, so. But the pest district usually tries to tag team when we're spraying just 'cause it's lesser cost, obviously. And he tries to hit some of the field areas kinda, um, west of town, too, just because there's some problem areas there as well.
The, the pest risk, there's, uh, district doesn't go to the east or west of town, though. It stops, it stops on the edge of town.
Yeah, yeah.
And everything that way, which is their predominant winds coming that way. They don't have them. They've never been able to form one.
I was just curious.
What does it cost to spray?
Um, depending on how much you have to do, probably around thirty-six hundred, but I. And then, of course, we do the fogging around the park pretty regularly. That Lexitown, I thought that was really creative Lanny offered to do that, so we could kinda try and mitigate it a little better this year.
We don't have a fog truck in town?
No, we do.
We do.
I mean, so we don't do neighborhoods and?
Um, they do. It just depends on where complaints come from. Um, it used to be you'd hear, um, you wanted to turn your air conditioning off immediately.
Yeah.
But I haven't heard of it as much, like, on Mesa, but they, they do run around the higher, you know, areas that we get really big complaints on, especially the parks or where people are watering.
Standing water, yeah.
Yeah.
And they aren't allowed to treat the water?
Um, well, depends on where it's at. I was talking about they put those bricks in, but it just depends. It's, it's easier to fog around. You couldn't put bricks everywhere in Rangelley and probably accomplish the same thing as on. I'm not gonna be as knowledgeable, obviously, about it as Jeff or John will be, but.
Okay.
They, um, just of what I get out of their conversations.
There's no issues with the river? Run off into the river?
Oh, the river's always gonna have mosquitoes, but I mean.
No, with the, with the chemical?
Oh, no, no. We, we've never had any issues with causing any kind of contamination or anything. The FAA has to approve that, too. We don't get to just do it without some sort of law. Any other questions?
Would it be outside of our ability to maybe assist in spraying down river a little farther? If there's, if that's our issue, is we know the prevailing winds are bringing them in from down there.
Part of the reason they haven't formed a pest district is because if you need one of those landowners dump on it, they won't form it. And so, you have to be careful with the landowner's rights.
Well, I'm just saying that 'cause the town, like, we, could we spray farther down, even though we're, we're, our focus is the town? Could we do anything to get to help down river because that's gonna affect us directly?
Well, we do, just on the outlane, we're just around the town limits.
I'm saying farther, like, like, down past the, the bridge, like, it's not that far.
I would have to get land, well, in, like, fields, there's no way we can fog fields.
Well, I'm not, I'm saying this aerial, when we do our aerials, like, we could do aerials.
No, the aerial does go a little bit out.
They don't go, they don't go very far.
They go outside of similar city limits.
Right.
Prob, I'm gonna say maybe Bill, Bill Willis's and maybe some of the strained fields because it's right there on the border. I mean, obviously, it's not a science of saying, "What town line is here?" It's not going over, so you're gonna get it just by default.
I'm just saying, like, farther.
Not without the landowner's permission.
Well.
And that's what happens is there's a gap between, if this landowner wants to do it, it's close to town, and there's a gap between that, and they don't wanna, if that person in the between doesn't wanna do it, then they can't keep the pest risk district going down river. And they have that happen.
I'm not saying as a, as a pest district, I'm saying as a town, could we just like, "Hey, it's sprayed down river, son."
That's the reason why there's a landowner that doesn't wanna do that, because they're getting oversprayed from town. That's why they don't wanna be a part of it.
I don't have any say on whether or not I get sprayed. It just happens. I live in town. I don't want my house sprayed.
That's because the town is doing it within our city limits.
Right.
The, the reason that we're not doing it down river is we would have to have permission from the landowners. And if there's one person in the middle, there's no way to control the spray.
Is that for, like, organic farming? Part?
Why they don't wanna do it? I, well, I feel like, like, I've heard of beet hives.
Well, it's their loss.
I'm sure Chevron wouldn't mind if they wanted to spray west of town, you know, to Millen Hill.
We can ask for grants and.
So, you say typically thirty-five hundred bucks covers the town for one spray?
What he sprays for the town, I don't know that he, you know, goes back and forth and does every inch of town. He probably hits the areas that he sees will be problematic. And like I said, when you're spraying from the air, it's obviously gonna filter out, so. I could have Lanny.
Like you said, there's cost savings if others join in, right?
Well, that's why the pest district normally does, but they just aren't ready to do it yet this year.
It, it might be something I can find out if we might be interested in, you know?
But, all you have to do is, um, make sure we schedule it at similar times, and Lanny's willing to do anybody if they want to jump on board with he's, you know, doing one area and then just go in a bigger area, so. I'll definitely let you know in the future, and Jocelyn could take a stab at it.
Well, it's, it's an issue at work. We discuss, you know, flying insects all the time, you know?
Well, a lot of mosquitoes are a health hazard as well, so.
Any other questions for Lisa? New business, item A, discussion and action to appoint two town trustees to each committee listed below. So, right now, let's see, we're gonna combine utilities and public works. That's one, right?
Yeah.
Or you, what do you call, what do you wanna call that?
You can just use utilities. I don't think we have to add public works in there. That'll just be part of their responsibility. Public safety, I'm gonna leave just because that encompasses, you know, enforcement and so. And like, that's the one that we utilize most often, and then finance and human resources.
And what do you, what do you wanna call that one?
The human resource one?
Yeah, with the finance. Human resource slash finance?
Yeah.
Perfect. And so, now on the utilities, who's on there right now? Do you have that by chance?
I think I left it a little.
I know which one is I'm on, I don't know which one's I'm not on, or who's on.
It was in our last board packet, right, or was it just handed out? So I think public safety right now is Trey and Tyson.
I'm on finance and uh development.
Same two I am?
Development went away, right?
Right.
We got the planning and zoning, covers that.
Yeah, so HR and finance and. Is that what you were on, Andy?
I was on uh community development and finance.
Yeah, same with me.
And then who's on utilities?
Ruby and Roger.
She's on, we're gonna keep this one.
Which he was on both of, so, but we're only doing uh.
And HR, finance.
So we're at two, eight, one now, right? So. Trey's out, if we've got him there, Tyson's out, so. I, if you want, you can throw me on. Public works and.
So we, we need to each be on two of the three committees?
Just one now, one now, it's gonna be utilities, public safety and HR finance.
Oh, wait, I'll, I'll do.
I volunteer for public safety.
Yeah, I'll stay where I'm at, unless somebody else wants.
I think, we're usually doing it all.
I think so.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Do you have one for another one for public safety?
Uh, yeah, cause we're only. We only have one right now.
Yeah.
We try to keep it to uh less than three, so that. We don't have to have a special meeting for it. So Lisa and. What about HR and finance, did you say you wanted us to stay on that one?
Yeah. I'll do that one too. We'll, we'll just keep it the same.
Yeah, yeah. And then um utilities, I guess will be Trey and.
I'll take it.
Okay. So do you, did you guys get that utilities?
Why don't you make a motion?
Do you want me to make the motion leading off that?
Yeah, if you can, I might check and scratch.
I already did leave the foundation.
First to combine.
So, I will make a mo, hold on a second, so, oh, school, we gotta do Rangelay. So the last one would be um the school foundation, and I'd like to stay on that, Trey's on it right now too.
That only requires two.
So that'll be you two, right?
Yeah, and I think he's, I think he's okay with it, unless somebody else wants to.
Volunteer him.
Okay.
That's what happens when you don't fill up, right? Okay, so that's got everything, utilities will be Trey and Tyson, public safety, Lisa and Luke. HR and Matt and I, okay, alright, I will make a motion to appoint. Uh, to the utilities committee, Trey and Tyson, public safety committee, Lisa and Luke, HR and finance, Matt and myself. And the Rangelay School Foundation, Mr. Schaefer and Trey.
I second that motion.
Motion's made by Andy, second by Matt, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Discussion in action to approve the May two thousand nineteen check register.
I'll make a motion to approve the May two thousand nineteen check register.
Second.
Motion's been made by Andy, second by Tyson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, discussion in action to approve resolution, resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero three, which supports domestic energy. And electricity production, mining and agricultural within out, what is it?
Our.
Our state of all the correspondent benefits to the economy, our nation's security, financial well-being and the health of our community. And I think that that's attached to the uh, the resolution, is attached to the board packet.
So this was kind of brought forth by the agency board, and they just want the agency board to kind of include everybody in their resolution. But I thought it was good for us just to take that stance too, I won't send it in, but we'll let Bonnie Peterson know that the town of Rangelay would like to be included in that resolution. That they sent on to the state, and it's just to show our support for our natural resources and extraction, because it's just what we are.
It's our livelihood. Okay, I don't know if that makes sense. Did you guys all, you, you have a chance to go over or have questions or anything?
No questions on it? That entertaining motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Andy, second by Tyson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, discussion in action to approve resolution, resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero four. Proclaiming that the month of July two thousand nineteen be the seniors' month and urge every resident to take time to acknowledge the older adults. And people who service them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to our community.
So Lisa Hatch actually was the first one to approach me about this, she says, um, that anybody that served, obviously, know the town always has a senior picnic. In the month of July, that this uh tank wants to do some events that are centered around honoring seniors and obviously the people that help take care of them. Because for a small community, we do have a great network of uh facilities and people that help care for elderly and handicapped people. And so um that was kind of their idea, and I agree with that, I think that's a great idea. Um, Janet's trying to do some advertising in the Beacon, I don't know if you've ever seen that publication, it's all over Grand Junction, it's kind of all about. Um, opportunities for senior citizens and we're kind of contacting them to see if maybe they'd even be willing to do an article about, you know, our facilities. And how people can progress from independent to assisted to, you know, eventually long-term care, and that's a pretty unusual thing in a community our size. And so we thought that might be a great way to advertise our community as well, and like I said, just, most of the seniors and I. That can add in what he feels about, you know, the people that he sees and cares for, but I know the people at White River Village are extremely excited. When we get an event that they come to, you know, White River Village and have a musical event or just anything that they can participate in, so. I think it's very worthwhile.
Yeah, that is, it's great, we need to, we do need to support our, our um aging population in town, because they do a lot for us, and they've done a lot for us. Um, and being an employee of the hospital, like, that's a lot of our, our business, cause it's our, our aging population, so absolutely.
And most of them are, grew up in this community.
Well, and if you read through the resolution, it just talks about their leadership.
I will make a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero four. Proclaiming that the month of July two thousand nineteen be seniors' month.
Second. Motion's been made by Andy. Second by Luke, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item E, discussion in action to approve the partner, partnering with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife and the Rio Blanco Conservation District. On the education and outreach to harvest smallmouth bass and northern pike for fish management on the lower White River drainage.
So I sent you all an email about this, this kind of came up at the last hour, and so I just wanted to make sure that you all had some input into that. Um, they went ahead and did their um issuing derby on July, or excuse me, June first, and um they did put out an advertisement. That for every fish that is, you know, that has been introduced, that's not, you know, a native fish in there, they, I believe, pay twenty bucks. And so there was quite a few people calling in and coming down, and they're just fishing away, so I think it's a great way for. CPW to take care of something that they can't manage now and give some fishermen some little game to, you know, help our. Water in the lake to kind of rid them, a lot of those fish just eat up everything else, so that's kind of the problem that they're encountering. And they're gonna do some advertising in this month, next month's utility billing, so.
What does partnering with them get us?
It doesn't get us anything, they just wanted us to be a partner and help them with the advertising of what they're trying to do.
Got you. What, what kind of fish are native there, or what kind of fish are they trying to like promote there?
Well, pike are the ones they're trying to get rid of.
Yeah.
Promote as well.
Blue head sucker.
Sucker fish.
Call out the pike metal? I'm, I'm just curious because. You know?
Yeah, pike metal is a native.
I've talked to Al Vandenberg about, you know, trying to figure something out up there. To get rid of some of the soil or to find a way to filter it differently, and I think there's an opportunity there. If, if we were to find a way to dig out some of those, dig out some of that dirt and re-vegetate, re. I don't know what I'm trying to say, but recreate.
The habitat.
Habitat for fish in several ponds along the side.
You mean like above the lake?
Above the lake, in the wetlands.
Are you allowed to do that?
I, I don't know, but I imagine if you pushed it.
Can't mess with the wetlands, but I don't know if that's true.
If you pushed it as a rehabitat, rebuilding a habitat for a native fish, you know, they might, they might jump on it.
Yeah, genius.
But if you could do that, you could create a habitat up there that would bring in more birds, lots more people to fish. And, you know, I think it'd be a awesome project.
I think it's definitely something the Water Conservancy District should probably maybe be the lead on, just since they're the management.
Yeah.
Agency, but.
Anyway, just a thought, but.
I don't know if the CPW would be part of that, I think it'd have to be the Water Conservancy.
Parks and Wildlife, CPW.
So basically, you're saying uh, u-using us for advertising, so through our utility billing and just around town.
The, you know, word out that they're trying to.
Yeah, so, they're not really looking for money, they're just looking for help.
Well, messy in mind.
Yeah.
It's not a huge amount though, to do the advertising in our utility bill.
Well, I'll make a motion that we should partner with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife and the Rio Blanco Conservancy District. To educate and out, uh, and give outreach to, for the uh, you know, the problems that the invasive species of are causing. In our, in our reservoir and in our river.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is made by Matt, second by Andy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So Connie's put a uh calendar out of the upcoming events. Um, this weekend is the hill climb.
And the Brew Fest.
And the Brew Fest. Um.
I did forget too, we got our new street sweeper.
That does a great job, by the way.
Going away.
I think he's awesome, just picks everything up.
So he's been a busy guy on the street sweeper, you'll all see that in our check register.
Um, the other informational items are, are in our packet, is there any questions on any of those?
Probably should mention too, the Western Local Government's Coalition, that is for our, uh, us joining with the three or four counties. For all of the pre-hearings that now the Quail Rattle Oil and Gas Commission are having, and they are huge. I don't know if you've seen any of the motions, but they're really getting, they're doing it just as fast as they did uh approve that. Legislation, so it's really good, and Kirby Wynn has been awesome about sending out emails and keeping, and they're, they're doing it all, we're not paying for that. That's just them acting on our behalf, so, and that's been a great opportunity for us, cause we could definitely not keep up with that.
I have a question.
Sure.
For the Brew Fest, do we have designated drivers or a way for people to get around?
I think Dawn did talk about having some designated drivers.
The last one that we approved that they, with approval of her license, they have to not necessarily have DDs, but they actually are going to do. Something like that, um, but they have to have a plan about where it is and how they're going to manage it, and I don't know.
Yeah.
Remember, was it last meeting that we had the approval?
Yeah, yeah.
They talked about all of that, Lisa, but that, they don't have to have DDs, but when they manage.
I believe Jeff mentioned that all the Elks would be available.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're going to, you know, have some pretty tight security, make sure that it's managed and that, you know, they're walking under H G. And also end at an hour that will disrupt their neighborhood, you know, so. And the tank is having a bunch of events, so you see all those in there as well.
Um, same board vacancies that we have, uh, the announcements, scheduled announcements are there, is there any questions on, on anything there? Well, the time is uh seven forty-nine, and the callless meeting adjourned.